Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 26th Legislative Session of the Salisbury City Council. All members are present and accounted for. I'd like to call the meeting to order. At this time, I'd like to have you join me in a moment of silent meditation, and especially remembering Corporal Heacock of the Delmar Police Department. Thank you, everyone. Acting Mayor Glanz, we have a couple of proclamations today.
We do. Good evening, Council. Tonight, we have two. The first one I'd like to read is in recognition of Arbor Day. So whereas J. Sterling Morton in 1872 proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees, and whereas Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and the planting of trees is a vital step in developing civic pride and a sense of community, and whereas trees provide an abundance of environmental and aesthetic advantages to citizens and wildlife wherever they are found, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of topsoil by wind and water, cutting heat and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas trees in the city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business area, and provide character to our community. Now therefore, I, Julia Glan, City Administrator of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim April 30th, 2021 as Arbor Day. And I know Alyssa is here with us and has, I'm sure, a couple of things she'd like to say on this topic. But I did want to just thank Alyssa for all her work and the folks that got together this weekend from Wet that have added cypress trees to our shoreline right along the, across from Marcus Street Inn. So Alyssa, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. Thank you so much, Acting Mayor Glan. That's really what I wanted to highlight as well. I just wanted to give a really special shout out to Wycomico Environmental Trust. It was last-minute planting, but they turned it around very quickly. We'll now have 10 new bald cypress trees planted right along the shoreline on the Wycomico River, right across from Marcus Street Inn. Those trees will help to stabilize the shoreline, collect nutrients from the water, help reduce flooding for years to come. So I just wanted to give a special shout out to them, and thank you so much for partnering with us. I look forward to doing more tree plantings as a city in the future. We've already got a couple slated for this year later on, one with Chesapeake Utilities and other groups. If you want to do tree plantings, reach out to us, and we will get them slated and get them on the calendar. Thank you all so, so much, and happy Arbor Day.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Thanks, Alyssa. And just for folks, if they missed, I think last week or the week before, we are now an official Tree City, so continuing our work in this area. So our next proclamation is for fair housing. Whereas April 11th, 2021 marks the 53rd anniversary of the passage of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1968. And whereas the Federal Fair Housing Act prohibits the discrimination concerning the sale, rental, and financing of housing regardless of race, color, religion, sex, disability, family status, or national origin, recognizing that equal opportunity for all is a fundamental goal for our nation, state, and city. And whereas housing is a critical component of family, community health, and stability, and whereas the Shore Housing Resource Board Incorporated is a private nonprofit organization of volunteers who represent area government, businesses, nonprofit agencies, and individuals who are committed to promoting and educating others about fair housing in Somerset, Wycomico, and Wester Counties. And whereas the Shore Housing Resource Board strives daily to make fair housing a reality for every citizen, for every resident. Now therefore, I, Julia Glan, City Administrator of the City of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2021 as Fair Housing Month. And I don't see any representatives from this organization, but I know that they're doing incredible work, and as is our team in Housing and Community Development, along with Habitat for Humanity and Salisbury Neighborhood Housing Services. We're all working toward the same mission here, so. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you. Thank you, Acting Mayor. Yes, we commend them for their work, and we appreciate everything they do. It's a very, very important job in our city. At this time, I'll call for a motion and a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson? And Mr. Boda? I'll now call the motion. All those in favor of legislative agenda as presented, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The vote is five to zero. At this time, I'll entertain a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
We'll give that one to Michelle. Ms. Jackson got the motion, and Mrs. Gregory got the second. Good evening, Mrs. Nichols.
Good evening. On the consent agenda tonight, we have the March 22nd, 2021 Legislative Session Minutes, April 5th, 2021 Work Session Minutes, and Resolution Number 3103, approving the city's action plan for community development block grant funds for CDBG program year 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Nichols. Questions or comments? Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No, just a good job on putting that plan together and getting those funds directed in where they should be going.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
I concur with Mayor. No other comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No comments.
Thank you. This is Gregory.
No comments.
Hearing none, I'll call the motion. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The consent agenda is adopted by a vote of five to zero. At this time, I'll detain a motion to approve ordinance number 2660 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda? Is that Mrs. Gregory?
Ms. Jackson.
Ms. Jackson, you sound alike. Got to change your voice.
Okay, I will. Aye.
There you go. Mr. Sullivan, good evening.
Good evening, Council President. Good evening, members of the council. Ordinance number 2660, An Ordinance Appropriating the Necessary Funds for the Operation of the Government and Administration of the City of Salisbury, Maryland, Period July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2022, Establishing the Levy for the General Fund for the Same Fiscal Period and Establishing the Appropriation for the Water and Sewer Parking Authority, City Marina, and Stormwater Funds. Be it ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, the amounts listed in Schedule A, Operating Budget Appropriations are hereby appropriated for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2022, to fund operations of the City of Salisbury, Maryland. Be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the amounts listed in Schedule B, Capital Project Appropriations are hereby appropriated for capital projects. Be it further ordained by the City of Salisbury, Maryland, that the amounts listed in Schedule C, Anticipated Grant Expenditures, are hereby appropriated for the grants listed, and the mayor is authorized to enter into any necessary agreements or memoranda in order to receive and expend these funds. Be it further ordained that the tax levy be and the same be hereby set at $0.932 per $100 of assessed valuation of all real property at $3.51 per $100 of assessed valuation for all personal property categorized as utilities, and $2.40 per $100 of assessed valuation for all personal property subject to taxation by the City of Salisbury for general fund purposes, including debt service purposes exclusive of revenues derived from the Water and Sewer Fund for debt service purposes attributed to water and sewer activities, and all taxes levied by this ordinance shall be liens from and after July 1, 2021, and shall be due and payable as specified in Title 14 of the Tax Property Article of the Antited Code of Maryland as amended. Be it further ordained by the Salisbury City Council that a public hearing on the proposed budget ordinance will be held at 6:00 PM on May 10, 2021, in Room 301 of the City-County Government Office Building, 125 North Division Street, Salisbury, Maryland. And be it further ordained by the Salisbury City Council that this ordinance shall take effect upon final passage.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments, Mr. Boda?
No, I think we've worked on this in two work sessions, and we've got another one coming up, and we'll be discussing some more then.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
No questions or comments.
Thank you. Hearing none, I'll call the motion. Yes?
Excuse me. That last line needs to be amended to not say in Room 301 of the G O B, but via Zoom. I just noticed that.
Okay. Can we have an amendment to strike that?
I'll make an amendment to strike. What line was that?
The last one.
Last line.
Last line.
The location of the hearing.
Make an amendment to strike the location of the hearing.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second. April, probably.
Yeah, April got it first, so.
Yeah.
We will vote on the amendment first. All those in favor of the amendment by striking the location of the meeting of the public hearing, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The amendment is passed by a vote of five to zero. We will now vote on the motion to approve ordinance number 2660 for the first reading. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
This is Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2660 for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero. I'll detain a motion to approve ordinance number 2661 for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Blake? Ms. Jackson? Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you. Ordinance number 2661, An Ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland to amend water and sewer rates to increase rates by 6% and making said changes effective for all bills dated October 1, 2021, and thereafter unless and until subsequently revised or changed. Whereas the water and sewer rates must be revised in accordance with the proposed fiscal year 2022 budget of the City of Salisbury and the appropriations thereby made and established for the purposes of the Water and Sewer Departments. Now therefore, be it ordained and enacted by the Council of the City of Salisbury that the water and sewer rate schedule set forth herein shall be adopted as follows. Section 1, Water and Sewer Rate Schedules. Metered Water Changes in City Rates. Residential and Small Commercial. Minimum Charge: $23.80 a Quarter. Commodity Charge: $3.55 per 1,000 Gallons. Commercial Customer Charge: $445.29 per Quarter. Commodity Charge: $2.06 per 1,000 Gallons. Large Commercial Industrial. Commercial Charge: $688.17 per Quarter. Commodity Charge: $1.65 per 1,000 Gallons. Schedule 2, Metered Water Charges Outside City Rates. Residential and Small Commercial. Minimum Charge: $47.60 per Quarter. Commodity Charge: $7.10 per 1,000 Gallons. Commercial Customer Charge: $890.58 per Quarter. Commodity Charge: $404.14 per 1,000 Gallons. Large Commercial Industrial. Customer Charge: $1,376.36 per Quarter. Commodity Charge: $3.33 per 1,000 Gallons. Schedule 3, Metered Water Charges. Warwick Community College and Urban Service District Rates. Residential and Small Commercial. Minimum Charge: $35.68 per Quarter. Commodity Charge: $5.33 per 1,000 Gallons. Commercial Customer Charge: $667.94 per Quarter. Commodity Charge: $3.10 per 1,000 Gallons. Large Commercial Industrial. Customer Charge: $1,032.27 per Quarter. Commodity Charge: $2.49 per 1,000 Gallons. Scheduled 4, Sewer Charges in City Rates. Residential and Small Commercial. Minimum Charge: $58.77 per Quarter. Commodity Charge: $8.81 per 1,000 Gallons. Customer for Commercial Category. Customer Charge: $1,110.26 per Quarter. Commodity Charge: $5.13 per 1,000 Gallons. Large Commercial Industrial. Customer Charge: $1,712.63 per Quarter. Commodity Charge: $4.10 per 1,000 Gallons. Schedule 5, Sewer Charges Outside City Rates. Residential and Small Commercial. Minimum Charge: $117.56 per Quarter. Commodity Charge: $16.64 per 1,000 Gallons. Commercial Customer Charge: $2,220.51 per Quarter. Commodity Charge: $10.23 per 1,000 Gallons. Large Commercial Industrial. Customer Charge: $3,425.27 per Quarter. Commodity Charge: $8.23 per 1,000 Gallons. Sewer Charges. Warwick Community College and Urban Service District Rates. Schedule 6, excuse me. Residential and Small Commercial. Minimum Charge: $88.17 per Quarter. Commodity Charge: $13.23 per 1,000 Gallons. Commercial Customer Charge: $1,665.39 per Quarter. Commodity Charge: $7.66 per 1,000 Gallons. Large Commercial Industrial. Customer Charge: $2,568.94 per Quarter. Commodity Charge: $6.18 per 1,000 Gallons. Schedule 7, Sewer Charges. Sewer-only customers. Rate is attributable based on number of fixtures. 1 to 2 fixtures. The quarterly in-city rate is $75.17. The quarterly outside-city rate is $150.35. The quarterly urban service district rate is $112.77. 3 to 5 fixtures. The quarterly in-city rate is $112.77. The quarterly outside-city rate is $225.54. The quarterly urban service district rate is $169.15. 6 to 20 fixtures. The quarterly in-city rate is $162.7. The quarterly outside-city rate is $324.14. The quarterly urban service district rate is $243.10. For every 5 fixtures over 20, the quarterly in-city rate is $66.84. Quarterly outside-city rate is $133.66. The quarterly urban service district rate is $1024. Schedule 8, Commercial and Industrial Activities. For each fire service, the annual in-city rate is $373. The annual outside-city rate is $746. For each standby operational service, the annual in-city rate is $373. The annual outside-city rate is $746. Definitions. Residential and Small Commercial Customers. These customers have average water utilization of less than 3,000 gallons in a quarter. Commercial Customers. These customers have average water utilization of 300 gallons to 600 gallons per quarter. Large Commercial Industrial. These customers have average water utilization over 600,000 gallons per quarter. Average Water Utilization Per Quarter. This will be based on annual consumption divided by 4 to get average quarterly water utilization. calculation of bills. For residential and small commercial customers, the minimum charge for both water and sewer will apply if water service is turned on at the water meter and usage is 0 to 6,000 gallons per quarter. Only the city can turn a meter on and off. For usage of 7,000 gallons and above, the commodity charge will be applied. For each 1,000 gallons used, the minimum charge will not be applied. For commercial and large commercial industrial customers, every quarterly bill will receive a customer charge for both water and sewer. Then for each 1,000 gallons used, the appropriate commodity charge will be applied. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury as follows. Section 2 is the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section 3 is further the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 4. The recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this Section 4. In Section 5, this ordinance shall become effective with the bills dated October 1, 2021 and after. Council President, the city clerk asks for me to include as a requested amendment the following language be added as Section 6 to this ordinance, and I quote, "A public hearing on the proposed ordinance will be held at 6:00 PM on May 10, 2021 via Zoom video conference."
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. I think we need an amendment then on this ordinance. So if I could have an amendment.
I'll move to accept the amendment as read by City Solicitor Michael Sullivan.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Boda, a second by Ms. Blake, to amend as per Mr. Sullivan's reading. I'll call the amendment first. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The amendment is passed by a vote of five to zero. Question on the, any question on the main motion? Mr. Boda?
No, I'd just make a comment. You know, as we've discussed over the past couple of years, our water sewer fund has not been, you know, revenues haven't matched the expenses. And with the new wastewater treatment plant coming online, there was a lot of unknowns. And now we're hoping over the next couple of years to get our rates to a point that we can effectively manage the finances of both the Water and Sewer Departments. So that's why we're seeing an increase this year, and we'll likely see an increase for the next couple of years to be able to level those out.
Very good explanation, Mr. Boda. Thank you. We appreciate that. Ms. Jackson?
I again, I'll concur with Mayor. Um, no other comments.
Yep. Ms. Blake?
No comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory?
No comments.
Thank you. And I once again thank Mr. Boda for that excellent explanation about why that is increasing. It is definitely needed. That's all the comments, then. I will call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number 2661 for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Ordinance number 2661 for the first reading is approved by a vote of five to zero.
Excuse me. Did you vote on the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
That was a vote of five to zero as well. And Mr. Boda made the motion, the amendment motion, if you didn't get it, and Ms. Blake made the second. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2662 for the first reading.
So move.
Second.
Ms. Jackson? Ms. Blake? Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Council President. Ordinance number 2662, An Ordinance of the City of Salisbury, Maryland to Set Fees for Fiscal Year 2022 and thereafter unless and until subsequently revised or changed. Whereas the fees charged by the City of Salisbury are reviewed and then revised in accordance with the adoption of the fiscal year 2022 budget of the City of Salisbury. And whereas the fee amounts set forth in the FY 2022 Fee Schedule, attached here too and incorporated herein as Exhibit 1, identify and list all fee amounts to be charged and otherwise assessed by the City of Salisbury for the period of the fiscal year 2022 in accordance with the adoption of the fiscal year 2022 budget of the City of Salisbury. Whereas some fee amounts to be charged and otherwise assessed by the City of Salisbury in fiscal year 2022 may have been inadvertently omitted from the FY 2022 Fee Schedule attached here too and incorporated herein as Exhibit 1. And any fee amount not listed in the said FY 2022 Fee Schedule shall be and remain the fee amounts set forth in the City of Salisbury municipal code. Now therefore, be it ordained and enacted by the Council of the City of Salisbury as follows. Section 1. The amounts set forth in the FY 2022 Fee Schedule attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein as is fully set forth in this Section 1 are hereby adopted by the Council of the City of Salisbury. And furthermore, the amounts set forth in FY 2022 Fee Schedule shall supersede the corresponding fee amounts set forth in the City of Salisbury municipal code until one or more of such fee amounts are subsequently amended. Be it further enacted and ordained by the Council of the City of Salisbury as follows. Section 2. Is the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all the provisions herein? Section 3. Is further the intention of the mayor and council of the City of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise enforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. The recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this Section 4. Section 5, this ordinance shall become effective as of July 1, 2021. And Mr. Council President, the clerk has requested that I ask for an amendment be made to insert Section 6, providing that the Salisbury City Council shall have a public hearing on the proposed ordinance to be held at 6:00 PM on May 10, 2021 via Zoom video conference.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. First, we need an amendment to the motion to add Mr. Sullivan's comments about the hearing on May 10 at 6:00 PM.
I motion for the amendment.
I'll second it.
Ms. Blake made the motion. Mr. Boda seconded. We'll vote on the amendment first. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda?
Aye.
Ms. Jackson?
Aye.
Ms. Blake?
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The amendment is passed by a vote of five to zero. We'll now vote on, well, first we'll see if there's any comments or questions on the ordinance number 26. ordinance number two, six, six, two. Mr. Boda.
Um, not at this time, but we'll probably discuss some of the items in it at the next budget session.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson.
No questions, no comments.
Thank you. Ms. Blake.
No questions at this time.
Thank you. Mrs. Gregory.
No questions.
There's no more questions. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two, six, six, two for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. Mr. Boda.
Aye.
Ms. Jackson.
Aye.
Ms. Blake.
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, six, two for the first reading is passed by a vote of five to zero. Once again, a reminder that these three motions will be addressed at a public hearing on May tenth at six P M. Please mark that down. And it'll be done by way of Zoom. Before I go any further, I would like to recognize William Harden, who requested and suggested the Fair Housing Month. And Mr. Harden, thank you. We, we thank you for your request.
Thank you for entertaining.
Very welcome. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number two, six, six, three for the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Boda. Mrs. Gregory. Mr. Sullivan.
Hey, Miss President. Ordinance number two, six, six, three, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to amend chapter fifteen point two-six rental residential premises of the Salisbury City Code by deleting subsection fifteen, twenty-six, zero, thirty-five, rent increases barred during states of emergency. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury desire to update the city of Salisbury municipal code, whereas a state of emergency was declared by Governor Hogan on March fifth, two thousand twenty, due to the pandemic known as COVID nineteen. Whereas Governor Hogan has issued multiple executive orders in an attempt to reduce the spread of COVID nineteen, resulting in the shutdown or slowdown of multiple businesses in the state of Maryland. Whereas due to the high unemployment rate, which was in effect during the COVID nineteen pandemic, the council of the city of Salisbury enacted ordinance number twenty-five ninety-nine, which amended chapter fifteen point two-six in the city of Salisbury municipal code to add provisions prohibiting landlords from increasing rent and rental fees during a state of emergency. And whereas since ordinance number twenty-five ninety-nine was enacted, economic conditions in the city of Salisbury have improved. The city of Salisbury has not taken any action to enforce the prohibition on increases to rent and or rental fees provided in chapter fifteen point two-six point zero thirty-five in the city of Salisbury municipal code. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury has concluded that it is in the best interest of the city of Salisbury to rescind the amendments to chapter fifteen point two-six of the city of Salisbury municipal code enacted under ordinance number twenty-five ninety-nine. By deleting the provisions contained in chapter fifteen point two-six point zero thirty-five of the city of Salisbury municipal code, for the purpose of removing the prohibition on increases to rent and or rental fees during a state of emergency. And now therefore be it enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury, chapter fifteen point two-six of the city of Salisbury municipal code, be and hereby is amended by repealing chapter fifteen point two-six point zero thirty-five in its entirety by deleting the crossed out language as follows. Section one provides for you, each and every provision that is being deleted from subsection fifteen point two-six point zero thirty-five of the city of Salisbury municipal code. It further enacted and ordained by the council of the city of Salisbury as follows. Section two is the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that each provision of this ordinance shall be deemed independent of all provisions herein. Section three, it is further the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause or provision of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause or provision so adjudged, and all other provisions of this ordinance shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section four, the recitals set forth here and above are incorporated into this section of the ordinance as if such recitals were specifically set forth at length in this section four. Section five, this ordinance shall take effect upon final passage.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Questions or comments from the council? Mr. Boda.
No questions, just glad we're, we're rescinding this as we begin to get back to normal.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Ms. Jackson.
Um, I do have some comments. Um, as far as this concerned, I did agree with it, but I would ask that everyone take in consideration on what everybody has gone through and that our landlords do not take advantage of the tenants that they're responsible for and that the tenants do their very best to pay their rents, catch up on their rents, do whatever it needs to be done to take care of your business. That's all I ask, that no one's taking advantage of, everybody's cordial with everybody and do what needs to be done.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Ms. Blake.
Um, I, the only comment I really have is I, I think at the time it was, it was necessary. And I, I do think that things are getting back and so it's kind of a different, a different situation. So, um, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Blake. Mrs. Gregory.
Just want to echo what everyone else has said is that, you know, at the time this was something we needed to do and we get it and I'm very glad we did and that, you know, we are slowly but surely getting back to, back to the way it should be. But yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Gregory. I'll call the motion. All those in favor of ordinance number two, six, six, three for the first reading, please signify by saying aye. If you're opposed, say nay. Mr. Boda.
Aye.
Ms. Jackson.
Aye.
Ms. Blake.
Aye.
Mrs. Gregory.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Ordinance number two, six, six, three for the first reading is passed by a vote of five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. At, at this time, I will open the floor for public comments. If you have a comment, please identify yourself and Ms. Glance will let us know.
This is William Harden, president of the Shore Housing Resource Board. I'd just like to again thank this, thank this council and the city of Salisbury for its ongoing support for our fair housing initiative. We often take housing for granted because we all have nice houses, but there are those amongst us who experienced discrimination in housing. I, I would encourage anybody listening that if you become aware of housing discrimination, that it be reported to your appropriate authority. And again, it takes all of us supporting this initiative to make and obliterate violations of, of discrimination. Thank you again for entertaining the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Harden. We appreciate your comment.
Mr. President.
Yeah, I saw Colin's hand up. Colin.
Hi, um, Collins, everyone, Coastal Association Realtors and Salisbury resident. I want to echo previous gentleman's comments as well about fair housing. It, it is a fundamental need in our community and it's something that at the Realtor Association, we, we take great pride in, in April being Fair Housing Month. We have a lot of activities on education related to our members, right down to an interactive simulation that all of our members are encouraged to do to answer questions and it takes about an hour and a half to get a certificate on fair housing. But, you know, there's been a lot of incidents in the, in the news lately. You probably all read about the Long Island issues and things of that nature. So, you know, as things come up, i- if anything happens locally, please do let someone know, let the association know where we are clearing house. We have ways of filing complaints and, and handling them locally. And if there are realtors involved in, you know, nine times out of ten, a realtor is involved in some sort of fair housing transaction. So, so we would love to, to be a place to, to help with that and make sure that everybody's got the, the best chance at, at housing and, and is treated fairly in the process. Secondly, I just want to say thank you for repealing the, the rental restrictions. Obviously, we're not intending to raise rents remarkably, but, but having a ability to, to continue business as normal. I think all of us are looking to get back to normal in some respects.
Thank you, Colin. Appreciate it. Anyone else? Okay, I don't see anyone else, so. Ms. Glance? Remarks?
Yes, well, just sticking on the topic of housing, I just wanted to again put everybody on notice that there is funding coming down from the federal government. It should be open at the beginning of May, so next week. And I heard on the radio today that the majority of the, the last stimulus or maybe the, I think the December stimulus hasn't got, gotten to tenants yet, which is insane. All the hoops that are in place. So again, we all just need to be, give everybody a little grace here and, and support them along the way as, as this money does come down to where it needs to go. And then outside of that, I just wanted to, to send my thoughts to our friends in Delmar and to Corporal Hee Cook, Hee Cook's family. And, you know, we're here for, we're here for our, our Delmar family if they need anything.
Thank you, Ms. Glance. Mr. Boda.
I concur with everybody's sending out their regards and prayers to the officer in Delmar and the family that, that was, that was assaulted as well. You know, very, very bad, bad situation. And, you know, thank you, you know, Colin for, you know, he just put a comment up about there's more coming for rental and mortgage assistance. So, you know, if you are a landlord and you have people that are behind, you know, make sure that we're funneling those resources to those individuals who, who are struggling. You know, because ultimately that, that money does go to the landlord. So, you know, we hope that they can help direct that as well. Because you'll get the money a lot faster than if you try to go through court, which if you, anything that goes to court now, even which a lot of that goes to circuit court can take, will take years because they are backed up that far. It's, it's ridiculous as they're starting to get, so get caught back up. And if you get called for jury duty, please do your due diligence and serve. On another note, we have a new Captain America. And if you didn't watch Falcon and Winter Soldier last week, it was a clip of Old Bay was, was in, was in it. Old Bay was in it. But great show, touches on some great topics, you know, addressing systemic racism, P T S D, a lot of things that you don't think would be in a movie like that or a show like that. It was a really good show, but we do have a new Captain America. And just everybody keep supporting your restaurants, tip your waitresses and waiters and your drivers and see you all soon.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Ms. Jackson.
Mayor's a mess. Um, I would like to formally wish my mother, whose birthday is today, her eighty-fourth birthday, and one of my sister friends is, her birthday is today. So, um, Mom, I love you and it's good to have a mother who is turning eighty-four years old because doesn't happen that often as I see, as people are passing today. So I'm so glad to have my mother with me, um, and my sister friend. Um, also, Julia, mayor, acting mayor, um, thank you for moving expeditiously on the cars that are on Delaware Avenue, um, community district one. The cars are moved, thanks to our mayor and our city council. Um, um, we do things in decency and in order. Um, and I love the way we work together. We, we do work together very well and I love that about this council. Um, fair housing, Mr. Harden, I would like for you to leave me your information. Um, but we have a, we have a problem here. I mean, I know that we say everything is fine in, in Salisbury as far as housing is concerned, but I had a little conversation on Facebook just the other day about housing in our community and in our district. So I, I, I'm very adamant about that and I would like to, um, start speaking about it and talking about it, the city council. We have talked about it before, but I don't think that we've got to that point where we have really dug as deep as we should dig. Um, and I would like for our city council to, um, one more session, get, really get into that because people are crying out about their living conditions. So, um, we need to, to search and find some means for our constituents, our residents in the city of Salisbury to live in safe and wholesome environments. Um, also, COVID is still here. COVID is real. My granddaughter just went to school today and a young lady that she walks with every day contracted COVID. So, um, we still have to maintain our safety measures. CDC gives us everything that we need. Mask, social distance, sanitizing. Continue to do that. Um, continue to stay safe. Just because we're getting our vaccine doesn't mean that everybody has them. So we have to remain safe, just like if we didn't, we never had our vaccines. We still have to stay safe. That's why we're on Zoom right now because we want everyone to remain safe. So I thank our council, I thank our mayor, and I thank everyone that is here today on our Zoom for everything that you're doing and have done for our city. Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
Thank you, April. Angela.
Two reminders. One, today as I was coming home late afternoon, there was a car that was, didn't wait for the bus at a bus stop and went around the bus. Please reminder, school's in session. We do have students going to school. The big yellow vehicles are school buses. When they have their lights flashing and the stop sign pops out the window there or off the side of the bus, please be diligent, stop and wait for that bus to take off and where it needs to go. Be safe with that. The other thing is, of course, as always, if you're healthy enough, please donate blood. Our region is always, always running low. The spring and summer's coming. We've got a lot of beach traffic and travel. Unfortunately, that brings some accidents. You just never know when you or someone in your family will need some blood.
Thank you, Angela. Michelle.
Well, I just want to say that I agree with Mayor. We do have a new Captain America and I had just already tell my kid that I will not buy him a set of wings. So, you know, there's that. Uh, but I, you know, I just want to reiterate what others take and hear and play, I don't know if you can hear him playing with his Captain America shield in the background right now. Um, you know, we, COVID is still here. You know, our, our vaccination rates are not what they should be. And I really urge folks to go get your vaccine if you can. Um, it doesn't, you know, a hundred percent protect you, but it's, it's a good, it's a good thing to get it and, and it can help you. So please go get vaccinated.
Thank you, Michelle.
Yeah, could I say something else? One thing, just slightly.
Sure, sure.
Um, Sunday I went to the Vietnam Moving Wall. Oh, my God. It was amazing. It was humbling. It was tearful. It was just utterly amazing. And I saw people on that wall that I knew. And from a little girl. And it was a tearjerker. So if you have not seen that moving wall, I know it's gone now from Ocean City, but if it's anywhere near, you can go, please. But if it's anywhere near, you can go, please go. I did not even realize the, um, veteran, um, veteran park at in Berlin and, um, Ocean Pines. It is beautiful. It is a beautiful place. Um, and if you haven't gone, go there. And if you follow where the moving wall is, it's the wall that heals. Go, go see it. Even if you don't have anybody that's been in the war, just go and, and, and see it for that moment. I was amazed at all the people I saw crying, women and men and children crying. So, I mean, it's a lot to remember and I honor those veterans that are now gone and I honor all veterans that are living and I honor all that are serving. So that's all I have to say. Just make sure you see that wall.
Thank you, April. Uh, just two comments. One, support, please support our, our local businesses. Wear your mask. And I have to make one comment. If the city of Salisbury and the, and the county of Wycomico can give millions of dollars out in two weeks to the people that need it, why can't our federal government get their act together? And get the money to the people who need it the most? It's a joke. It is a joke. I guess my frustrations came out, but, uh, anyway, thank you. Yeah, Julia?
It looks like William has his hand raised again, if, if you're willing to, uh,
Sure.
comment.
Okay, I see it. William?
Very briefly, uh, in my capacity, my daily capacity as uh, on the administrative staff of the town of Delmar, I thank everyone who's sent their sentiments and well wishes to obviously Hee Cook. Uh, I will convey it to to the town tomorrow, to our town manager and to the police department tomorrow that Salisbury sends its, it's our well wishes. Also, in response to, uh, back with the other hat as president of the Shore Housing Resource Board, anyone who has any questions or of me can reach me at 410-896-2777. My direct extension is 103. Be glad to speak with you.
Thank you, William. We appreciate, we appreciate it. Thank you very much. Okay, if there are no other comments, thank you all for your participation and being prepared as you normally are. And we wish you the best and we'll see you next week. So with that, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.